Guy, Ben and Indy. I'm the campaign manager for Aaron Stone. And the Aaron Stone to City Council Campaign is sponsoring this event. So I want to go through some administrative details with you. If you need a bathroom, it's out that door over there. Oh, please turn your cell phones all off. Oh, on the stage, we have a table with campaign materials, including an email list for Palestine events. So at the end of the talks today, feel free to go up on stage, take whatever you want, and sign up for our email. Let's see if I missed anything.
Do you want to announce the endorsements of anti-Semitism in Colorado? Because there are five of them.
Thank you, no. Okay. Then we'll have a question and answer period at the end of this talk. You can speak now. Okay, so without further ado, I would like to, oh, no, wait, before I introduce the good doctor, I want to give you a sense for what you're in for today. So here's the agenda. Dr. Mohammed Kusay will give his presentation. It's a slideshow presentation. When he's finished, Aaron Stone will come up and speak about the importance of Gaza to his campaign. And then we'll have a question and answer period. And following the event in this room, we're going to have a press conference starting at 3 o'clock in the library, which you can attend if you're interested. Okay. So now I'm going to introduce Dr. Kusay. Dr. Mohammed Kusay is a pediatrician in Aurora, and he's a member of Doctors Against Genocide. Earlier this year, he's, yes. Now, you think all doctors would be against genocide, but apparently not. Earlier this year, he spent nearly three weeks in Gaza, providing medical care in four hospitals in Khan Yunis and northern Gaza. During his time there, he witnessed the devastation of the healthcare system. He responded to mass casualty events. And he stood shoulder to shoulder with Palestinian doctors, patients, and families through both suffering and moments of joy. Today, he shares his experience, not only as a physician, but as a witness, offering testimony from Gaza that speaks to our shared obligation to stand for justice, preserve dignity, and never turn away from the oppressed. So please join me in welcoming Dr. Mohammed Kusay. So I'm about to pass around a piece of shrapnel that the doctor got in Gaza.
Thank you so much, Guy, for that wonderful introduction. It's truly my honor to be here with you guys today and tell you guys about one of the most impactful experiences I've ever had in my life so far as a young physician. So that's actually a quick read of me. I was waiting for the bus to pick us up outside the ophthalmology hospital. In the distance, there's actually a children's hospital in the background that has since been destroyed. But I was just letting the kids learn how to use my stethoscope. For those that don't know, this is a map of Gaza. I was invested for about three weeks. And so to get into Gaza, we actually had to travel to Jordan, cross the Almud Bridge, and then drive through Israel to get to the Kerem Shalom Bridge Crossing over there, because the Rakhim Crossing at that point was closed. And then our work was actually all the way up to the top, where the city is. And we had to travel all throughout Ezzah. And so when we arrived, we spent our first night in Khan Yunis, over where it says Wada Ezzah, is where the Netzerin Corridor was cut at the time to divide Gaza into northern and south. It was a closed military zone, meaning nobody was allowed to approach it without permission. And so we actually had to wait for permission from the Israelis. And so we spent the night in Khan Yunis. Again, next slide. This is the group of doctors and nurses and healthcare workers I went with. We were initially eighteen of us. Fifteen of us got denied arbitrarily, or sorry, three.
Five of them.
Five of them got denied arbitrarily. And so you never find out why you get denied like 3:00 AM the day before you're supposed to deploy. Next slide. This is actually what the Kerem Shalom Crossing looks like. It's just thirty-four walls of concrete. And this is on our way out. Actually, we stopped a parade before we left. Next slide. And so once you get to the Kerem Shalom Crossing, there are no vehicles that are actually allowed into Ezzah and then out of Ezzah. So we actually had to take our bags, and we had medical supplies and whatnot with us. And so my bag was probably a good like eighty, ninety pounds. And you have to walk six hundred meters past, you know, these six fences, these six layers of fences to get into Ezzah. Next slide. And then on arrival, immediately, you're greeted by the E-line, which has armored vehicles and people wearing bulletproof vests. This very quickly highlighted to me, you know, the degree of risk that we were getting ourselves into. Next slide. And so as we were driving through, you know, north to get to Khan Yunis, which was the biggest city in the south at the time, you start to see the level of destruction. And so this is as we're approaching Khan Yunis. This is actually the old airport in Ezzah, which was destroyed in 2008, not destroyed in this conflict. Next slide. And then, I don't know if you guys can see up there. This says "Basic School for Boys." This is actually an elementary school that has also been destroyed. Next slide. Gaza despite everything, still has just a, you can still find a lot of its beauty in Ezzah. And so this is a mosque. Places where people tend to gather in large numbers are targeted by the Israeli military. I just thought it was impressive that the men are still standing, so I took this picture. Next slide. I am a pediatrician. What drew me to working with children is the fact that children have the ability to find joy in anything. And so these were five boys playing "Throw the Rock at the Other Rock." Some of them were barefoot. And they are just existing in the most difficult situations and still finding joy. Next slide. This is actually Nasser Medical, within Nasser Medical Complex. I'm inside the hospital looking out. And so in my time in Ezzah, I actually ended up visiting six different hospitals. Every one of those hospitals had been either bombed, or burned, or a combination of both. And so I took this picture because up there it says, this is a dialysis center. I don't know how many people here know somebody who's on dialysis. Somebody who's on dialysis is not someone who's capable of doing much else other than getting dialysis. They have to get two to three hour sessions, four times a week, otherwise they are not capable of functioning. And if you look at this building, you see char, and you see that this building does not even have a round put into it. Because when the Israeli military took over Nasser Medical Complex, they burned this building. In the foreground, you can see there's a bunch of ambulances. None of these ambulances work. Some of them were deliberately destroyed. And then when the Israeli military was pulling back from Nasser Medical Complex, they actually cut the wiring out of these ambulances. It's impossible to get replacement parts in Ezzah. Let's just, Jim, let's see if you guys can see. And then over here, it's just hanging across. And so within Nasser Medical Complex, doctors and staff that I talked to pointed out to me that over, over by that wall over there, they pulled out about two hundred bodies from a mass grave. And then on the opposite wall as well, they pulled out about a hundred bodies that were buried in the mass grave. Israeli military actually withdrew from Nasser Medical Complex. Next slide. This is on our way actually to the north. And so, hope it'll load. So people understand the context. Ninety percent of buildings of Ezzah have actually been destroyed. And so the vast majority of the population lives in these massive, massive tent cities. It might not load. It's just about three minutes of bus driving past tents nonstop. And this is the reality for millions of people in Ezzah every day. So on our way, like I said, we passed the Netzerin Corridor. The Netzerin Corridor is a closed military zone. And so, I don't have a user pointer. But like up above the screen, you can see there's kind of like something bumpy in the road. That's a body. As we were passing through the Netzerin Corridor, we saw bodies on the road that were decaying in the open air because nobody had been able to come and retrieve these bodies because this was a closed military zone. And this has become a theme later on. When we were allowed to go to the north, we would find human remains as we were walking around. Next slide. This is actually what the Netzerin Corridor looks like. There's actually nobody in there. There's just a camera. And so while we were waiting or driving it down, showed everybody our, showed all the passports. And then the drone actually flew out from a nearby military base and went around the bus, confirming everybody who was supposed to be going to the north was actually on that bus. And then we actually had two different Humvees that pulled up next to us and started firing rifles for no reason into the air other than to scare us. But, next slide. We did manage to make it to the north. This is on my first day at work. There's still kids, there's still elephants, there's still dogs. That's something I want people to take away from this talk. That even though the level of devastation is unbelievable, it is the worst I've seen. And I did medicine in Puerto Rico, so I was there when Hurricane Katrina happened. I have been through earthquakes. The level of devastation is unbelievable, but there are still millions of lives in Ezzah, half of whom are children, that we have an obligation to do what we came to protect. This is on my way to work the first day. You can see the level of destruction that these bombs do. That building was at least six stories and has been completely leveled. There's no heavy equipment that's actually to pull people out from under the rubble. Next slide. This is the hospital where I primarily worked. This is called the Patient Friends Benefant Society Hospital. You can already see the roof is, the wood is falling apart, which is interesting. Next slide. And so this is the view from the hospital. You can see that any buildings that are painted in blue are typically UN buildings. So that's actually a UN school that has been utterly bombed. Over in the foreground, you can see there's a van, likely an ambulance, based off the shape of it, that has been destroyed. And there's just trash piling up. And so communicable diseases have become a big issue in Ezzah because all the municipal services are no longer there. Next slide. This is just the front of the hospital I worked at, just for reference. Next slide. And then also same thing, just so you guys understand where we are location-wise. And mind you, this is eight children in this hospital, only three children. Next slide. You can already start to see, this hospital has also been bombed. And so there is no roof inside the hospital. We just had tarp set up on top of what used to be the frame for the roof. And so any sensitive medical equipment was kept inside a second tank within the hospital. Next slide. And so this is a picture of the hospital, how it looked back in February of 2024, when the Israeli military withdrew from the area. Again, you can see this is a children's hospital that has been hit with tank rounds and has been deliberately set on fire. Next slide. The assault on lives in Ezzah includes direct assault on people and children and civilians. Includes assault on healthcare, which we were showing. And then also the breakdown in the healthcare system leads inevitably to people dying. And these people are not counted as victims of the war. This is probably my most famous patient. This is Habibah Askei. Habibah Askei developed an infection, a bloodstream infection, which is very common in refugee camps, called enterococcus. And one of the bad side effects of enterococcus is it reduces the body's ability to produce something called protein C or antithrombin. Protein C prevents our blood from coagulating. Naturally, if somebody bleeds, you put it on the side, it coagulates. But our body constantly produces proteins to prevent that coagulation from happening. Habibah did not have that protein. And so you can already see her hands have started getting necrotic because her blood vessels have plodded off entirely. Protein C is an isolate that is available in most biocom labs. It is one that working here in Colorado, I can order for my patients. And it's one that was not available to Habibah because it needs to be refrigerated. And the logistics of getting it into Ezzah and then into the north was too much. And so this is me trying to, you know, make her happy as best I could. What you don't see here is she also had necrosis in her opposite hand and had necrosis in one of her legs. When I first met Habibah, necrosis was limited only to her fingertips. And you can actually see there's white patches on her hand because our hands have two arteries that go to them. And so she still had some collateral circulation that was providing to her hands. We knew that this was not something that we were going to be able to treat in the north. And so we requested that Habibah Askei be evacuated out of Ezzah. And so the health ministry felt that it would be best to move her to the south while we were awaiting Israeli permission to move her out. The problem is, if you recall, there's a Netzerin Corridor, meaning that she needed permission from the Israelis to actually be able to evacuate. And so we got permission for Habibah. We were unable to secure permission for her mother, or her grandmother, or even her aunt due to vague security concerns by the Israelis. And so Habibah ended up spending another two weeks in the north and another three weeks in the south before she was finally evacuated to Jordan at the personal request of the King of Jordan. But this was a child that we knew we were sending out for a triple amputation. And they wanted us to send her without her mom or without any family. Put yourself in the shoes of that mother who is not guaranteed that her daughter is going to evacuate. And she has to decide whether she's willing to send her daughter to the south to give her a better chance at life. But there's always the possibility that she will not, never get out of Gaza and that she will die, and die alone. And so her mom made the very difficult decision of waiting until they were finally granted permission. And they weren't finally granted permission. But at that point, it was already too late. And you'll see a picture of Habibah towards the end. And she did end up undergoing a very radical triple amputation of both arms and one leg. Next slide. Like I said, the assault on Palestinian lives from pediatrician I worked almost exclusively with children is not limited only to direct effects. This is Abdaziz. Abdaziz is twelve years old. Abdaziz suffered a C3 transection, which is a very high transection in the spine, meaning he's a quadriplegic. But there is no stable power in Ezzah. This is a child who is ventilator dependent. And so this is a child who lived at our pediatric ICU because there was no place else that we could send him. Even though he was functionally stable, we could not send him to continue his life at home. So he had spent the past seven months in the ICU with us. Next slide. This is where we slept. And you can kind of see that there's a window over there. And then in the foreground over here, there's a window. This is kind of where my bed was. While we're there, as I said, every hospital has been bombed. This hospital did not have windows. They had put a plastic wrap to try and keep out the water, try and keep out the cold. This was January in Ezzah, it was cold. And we did not have heaters. What we may do with a bunch of blankets, just the same as everybody else was doing there. And all night, while you're trying to sleep, there's bombing happening around you. And so every time a bomb drops, the building shakes, you feel it in your chest. It awakes you. But the first couple nights, I was not getting any sleep. And then by night three, I told the people around me, just give me earplugs, I'm going to go to sleep. This was after the people of Ezzah had told me, if you can hear the bomb, it's not intended for you because both the bomb and the plane are moving faster than the speed of sound. And so the bomb that'll kill you, people not hear. And so that was the weird consolation they gave me so that I could get some sleep. Next slide. One of the things that I had never really thought about being in the US is, this is at the same hospital, is where does oxygen come from for our patients? I just wear oxygen, they just plug it into the wall. That's not the case in Ezzah. At the time, when I was in the north, there was about three different hospitals that were at capacity and functioning. All of them had had their oxygen concentrators bombed by the Israeli military. And so there was one remaining oxygen concentrator in all of North Ezzah. Every single day, every hospital would send people to fill up, you know, fifteen, twenty oxygen cylinders. And then within the hospital, every two hours, there's an alarm that goes off. So somebody goes down and hot swaps the oxygen cylinders so that our patients don't suffocate. Next slide. Sometimes while you're working, you'll be working in the dark because there's suddenly no more power. Because most of these hospitals were running on generators, old generators at that. And so sometimes the generator would fail. And you may be in the middle of an operation. So this was in the middle of an operation. And thankfully, this person survived because upstream, the anesthesiologist is manually providing oxygen to this patient. Next slide. This is me helping out also with that, some of the anesthesia work. Next slide. This is, there's a piece of shrapnel that's supposed to be rolling around. This is actually the shrapnel, this is actually the kid that we pulled the shrapnel out of. This is a four-year-old boy who essentially did nothing other than be close to an explosion. And this piece of shrapnel went in through his back, toward his diaphragm, destroyed his spleen, destroyed three quarters of his pancreas, punched a hole in his colon. And because of the shock injury, because of the shock wave from the bombing he was nearby, our small intestines, very soft tissue, they can perforate because of just strong shock wave. See multiple perforations, it is small intestine. And so this is myself, working with my friend, Dr. Abou Habbah Abouwadid. We call him Flower Daddy because Abouwadid is father of flowers in Arabic. He is one of the most prolific surgeons now in terms of treating patients who have been in explosive injuries because he's worked for the past two, two and a half years now during the war nonstop. He actually slept at the hospital with us in case patients would arrive. Next slide. That's the same piece of shrapnel that I'm passing around. You guys feel free to compare. That piece of shrapnel is fifteen grams. Our government has provided two thousand pound bombs to the Israeli government to use against the Palestinian people. How many pieces of shrapnel like that are in one of those arms? Next slide. These are all the organs we pulled out of him. Next slide. But he survived. And I always say that this little kid is fortunate. Even though, what you can't see offscreen, kind of in his diaper, is now he has a colostomy. He has a permanent diversion of scoling out through his abdomen because we didn't have enough tissue to connect it back to his A and S and B and the normal GI system. Next slide. This is one of my friends, Dr. S. D. Next slide. This is actually the Baptist Hospital within northern Gaza. And so this hospital actually used to be a church before it became a hospital. And it's now being decimated, the health industry. And so this entire building, let's see, there's families that live within it. There'd be the patient families, some staff families. And there's children all over the place. There's kids I'm waving to. And yeah, this hospital has also been bombed. Over on the right-hand side, you can see there's grass on the wall because that's actually the chapel. That has been turned into a patient space. Next slide. Inside of the chapel, as I said, you can see behind all those curtains, there's patients that are stored. This is the second of the two hospitals I worked at. Next slide. This is the emergency room in there. I just took a picture of it so you guys get a reference for the location. This is where all the mass casualties incidents in North Gaza were brought. And so when I was done seeing patients at the pediatric hospital over there at work, just hang out a couple hours, and then out of nowhere, you can hear an arm. It's all hands on deck. And you know, fifty, sixty people will show up out of nowhere. Half of those people were children. And you have to go through and triage them one by one and decide, decide who will survive on their own, who will survive with medical attention, and who there is no hope of them surviving. And you have to prioritize the patients that will survive with medical attention and leave the patients who are in the process of dying. Next slide. This is one of the cases that stuck with me. This is a three-year-old boy who was near an explosion. He had some rubble fall on him because of the explosion. So he came in with open lacerations of his arms and legs. We washed his lacerations, we cleaned them, and I stitched them back up. And then again, moved on to the next patient because there's more, there's other people who need you. And as I finished with the second patient, the parents turned around and told me, hey, he's acting a little bit funny. And so me and my interference, I said, this is due to a concussion from being next to an explosion. This is not abnormal. Moved on to my third patient. As I finished with the third patient, the parents asked me, they're like, hey, he's a little bit more stevie now. Again, not unusual symptoms for a concussion. And then they asked me, they go, hey, clean up and stitch up all his other wombs. There's a small womb on the side of his head, do you think you'd be able to stitch it up? I went, I washed it out. And by that point, I knew that this was not just a laceration, not just a cut in the skin. This was a tract from a piece of shrapnel that had entered through the side of his head and gone into his brain. This is a piece of shrapnel, you can see the hole. Imagine this head of a three-year-old. This is about the size of the tip of a ballpoint pen. And so we sent this kid immediately for a CT. By the time he came back from the CT, the CT showed that he had shrapnel in the brain. He had bleeding in the brain. He was no longer conscious. We did not have pediatric neurosurgeon with us in the north. And parents in Ezzah have this perception that because we're coming from the west, we may either have supplies or abilities that the doctors in Ezzah don't have. Medicine doesn't change between here and Ezzah. It's just the resources that change. Unfortunately, we do not have anything for this patient. And the parents were grabbing on to my jacket and asking me, doctor, please do anything for this child. And I had to ask the nurse to please find the parents a quiet corner in the back of the ER where this child could pass. This child ultimately passed. Well, this was one of the hardest moments I've had as a physician. I am not used to walking away from my patients. Working here in Colorado, working here at the Children's Hospital of Colorado, there is no resource, there is no specialty that I cannot get in an emergency. But because this child wasn't destined, this child was destined to die. Next slide. This is what the outside area of the Baptist Hospital looks like. They just start stacking bodies here. The last night before the January ceasefire went into effect, we had over a hundred bodies over here. We started stacking bodies on the grass because there's no more room. Next slide. This is why I brought this up. This is what the ED looks like after I left back in, what's it, April of this year. The Israeli military actually bombed this emergency room. This emergency room was a lifeline for the north of Ezzah. And so the doctors have continued working at the Baptist Hospital, but now they're triaging patients on the floor outside the emergency room. Next slide. This is the green space within the Baptist Hospital. Hope it'll load. What just ended up happening, because when these hospitals are seized, people aren't able to leave, when people die, they actually get buried on the hospital grounds. And so this entire green space behind the hospital, everywhere you see kind of a rectangle or stone, those are all tombstones. That back wall over there actually is where the Israeli tanks entered at the time. And you can kind of see the smiley face looking thing over there. That used to be a children's playground. It was run over and destroyed. And then when the hospital was reopened, that back wall was covered and protected. But every one of these stones is a grave marker. In case you were wondering, under those trees as well, there's more bodies buried. Next slide. I am a pediatrician, and I hand out stickers and candy. And so I thought this was interesting that the director of the hospital was freaking out. He's like, where do all these stickers keep coming from? And so I, now it's all me. But like, the children there, they have this amazing ability to find joy in even like the worst of circumstances. That girl over there, her name is Star. Next slide. Yeah, that's me. Next slide. And so I just, I took a bunch of pictures of her because I just thought her smile was beautiful. And then we became friends. And so while I was handing out stickers to her one day in the hospital, she sees me, she comes up to me, and I gave her a sticker. And she goes, oh, my friend is at the other side of the hospital. Wouldn't it be possible to go and give her a sticker? And so I start walking with her across. And I was like, oh, tell me about your friend. And she goes, oh, she's actually older than me by three years. Because Star has about nine in this picture. She's actually older than me by three years. She's my friend's sister. Next slide. And so she tells me, my friend was actually killed. And this is in the middle of the hospital grounds. And she goes, my friend was killed. But this is her sister that would want to go give stickers to. And as we're walking by this grave, she goes, oh, my friend, like frozen. Can we go and give her some stickers? And in my six years as a physician, after training as a pediatrician, I have never faced a situation like that. I did not know how to respond to this child. And so I went, and I put frozen stickers on this child's grave. Next slide. I also had the eternal privilege of spending two weeks in Gaza under, you know, the bombing, under all of that. But I also got to see six days in Gaza post the January ceasefire. And so this is the day the ceasefire went into effect. These kids are ecstatic. Next slide. But that also meant that we had a chance to finally leave our hospitals. I should add, we were operating with full permission and awareness of the Israeli military in Gaza. But despite that, we were not granted permission to leave our hospitals. And if we left our hospitals, we could potentially become a threat. I took that seriously, but not that seriously. I was standing about six feet outside the hospital handing out candy when there's an airstrike about thirty feet in front of me. Um, and so that very quickly, I had the feeling that I could easily become one of the many patients I had, I had been treating. Thankfully though, when the ceasefire happened, we were able to go out. This is a Shifa hospital, Shifa hospital for those who don't know, is a hospital, about nine hundred beds. That is about the size of Anshu's. So imagine Anshu's utterly and completely destroyed. Next slide. This is one, uh, yeah, that was one building, that's the special, that's the specialty surgery building, that's the inpatient building. Behind it, there's a burning center, the largest burning center in all of the Middle East, also destroyed. Next slide. This is what the inside of Shifa hospital looks like. Again, you can see it has been destroyed and it has been burned, um, to deliberately deprive people of, um, uh, the care that they provide. Next slide. This is the, uh, this is the, you can see how, this is the emergency room in the Shifa hospital. It, it is massive, this is just one part of the emergency room, there's about two other parts just like this. It'll be one of the biggest, yeah, in Palestine, probably most of the world. On the outside over there, alongside, the people who were there to help, it's not my Shifa hospital, it was seized. Uh, they actually had the buried bodies out there as well in the, in the green space behind the hospital. Next slide. Um, we also had a chance to get out, uh, a little bit further north and see beyond Gaza City, um, what was going on. The north beyond Gaza City was actually a closed military area as well, but there were still people living in there. This is actually the UN schools, when they talk to you about the UN schools and, uh, where people are hiding and, you know, they make some targets. The UN schools are full of families and children. Next slide. Yeah, you can see, people are just trying their best to live there with the minor promise of protection. Because this is a UN, um, facility. But again, you can see the bullet holes all along the wall, the lower apartments have been lit on fire. Next slide. Um, again, while walking around, just in the green space, this girl pointed out to us that over here, what used to be a playground for the kids, um, is now a graveyard. Next slide. But not, when I say all of this, that does not mean all hope is lost in Gaza. I put this slide deliberately because I want people to see there are still some buildings in Gaza, even though the majority of people in Gaza live in tents. Um, and we have obligations to protect them. They may not pass an engineering inspection, but there are people in every one of those buildings. Next slide. Um, this was from our volunteer office. This is actually the AP news building right in the front, if anybody knows the story of it. The Israeli military, I don't know if they're reporting, coming out of Gaza City, just that little building. Um, but you can see over in the distance, that right there is Israel. We're talking about very short distances, like I came home from Aurora today, that is probably longer than the distance between the Gaza Strip and Israel. And you can see all around Gaza, wherever there's an open space, people have pitched tents. Next slide. Again, children manage to find joy in anything. And so this actually says, Muhammed, uh, Muhammed Rahma, uh, Hwa Lee Hsang, which is just, um, the name. It says Refugee Camp of Mercy, Mercy Refugee Camp. And so if this loads, you'll see the kids are actually just using the doors of the refugee camp as a swing. Because that's what kids do, that's what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to play. It's, it's fine, you, you, you guys get the idea. And then this was actually after the ceasefire happened. Um, once there were no longer any drones or planes overhead, the kids felt comfortable being outside. And so we sat and played duck, duck, goose together. Uh, I really want this to load, even though my knees were not have to. You know what, I, I, I took it just in case. But you can see like these kids are still capable of joy. Oh, it's okay, y'all. I can, I can try and pull them up later, I'm happy also to share with you this, uh, this drag with anybody. Next slide. Um, we also had a chance to go and visit, um, the oldest mosque in Gaza, which was previously a Roman temple, then became, I believe, a church, then became a mosque. Um, and so within the middle of the prayer area in the mosque, there's just a random show, um, or a random bomb that, I guess, didn't detonate properly. And so it's just still sitting there. Next slide. Yeah. Um, and so you can see already, like the stonework and all that is very, very old, um, in this building. And, uh, the entire, um, prayer space, the internal prayer space of it is just in level. This building, if I'm not mistaken, is about two thousand years old. Um, because over there where there's a door, that door actually goes out to the ocean. Because the Romans used to use, um, that direct connection to the sea, um, in their, in their, uh, in their, in their worship practices. And so this is actually the prayer area, the internal prayer area, I must have just ran out of rug. Um, but the entirety of it has just been leveled. Once I climb up the little pillar of Rome, you can see how deep, um, the layer of Rome is. Because we're probably at like a second story level here, but there's just, just nothing. Oh, thank you. Yeah. Next slide. Um, the other thing, um, once the ceasefire went into effect, uh, the first thing that, uh, the people in Gaza wanted to do more than anything was to go and, uh, find their family members. And so after we came back from the mosque, uh, staying outside the Baptist hospital, this truck pulled up next and I was like, wow, this truck smells so strong. Why is it here? And then once they pulled up in front of the morgue, I understood these are bodies that have been decaying for who knows how long under the rubble. That families were finally able, um, to, you know, uh, find and, um, you know, bring, uh, to give them their last rites. Next slide. Um, we had a chance, like I said, to go to the north. The north of Gaza is utterly devastated. There is very little that is still standing. I was very much impressed with this building standing despite having all its knocked out. So, next slide. Um, there's still people living amongst the rubble. To this day, people text me, um, now that there's a ceasefire on place, um, I'll come back to our neighborhood, our house isn't there, we just ditched it down where it was. And so you can see there's kids living amongst the rubble. Next slide. This is the first day that we went, we were not able to make it to the north because it was the very first day of the ceasefire. And so we tried to go, but there was just a large caravan of people streaming back from the north towards Gaza City. And we did not understand what was going on, because in the distance is, uh, Jabaya. Um, and so we did not understand what was going on until we talked to them. Turned out it was a caravan of people who on the first day of the ceasefire were very excited that they were going to be able to go back to their homes. And they went north and they could not find where their homes were. And so dejected, they turned around and they came back to Gaza City to continue living in tents. But the amount of people that were there made it so difficult for us to even be able to go towards the front. Next slide. And you can see, this is the rest of the caravan, this is the exact same day. Even though, despite all of that, somehow like if you cover up the destruction, the group of people who are refugees now, Gaza manages to be beautiful. Like, I don't understand it. Next slide. This is actually what Jabaya looks like, you can see very little that is still standing. Um, and, next slide. While we were walking around, um, I took a course in high school called Challenges to Democracy. And so we talked a lot about, uh, different, uh, genocides and, um, apartheid that happened globally. And so, um, I learned about the, uh, the killing fields and how afterwards, um, after the genocide was done, people would walk around and then find human remains. And I was like, this is, it's probably hyperbole. But while we were walking around Jabaya, I found this part of a human skull on the floor. Um, this is part of a body that was never retrieved, that was most likely scavenged by animals. This is, for those who don't know the anatomy, this is the left lower portion of the skull. Um, and so we buried this person, but this is another person who was uncounted. Next slide. Also had a chance to go and visit Kamada One Hospital. Kamada One Hospital was famous for being, um, one of the most noteworthy hospitals that was still, uh, functioning until the Israelis shut it down. Um, I don't know if you guys can tell, there's a lot of cribs in this hospital. Because Kamada One Hospital was also a children's hospital, but was also seized and parts of it were lit on fire. Next slide. This, for those who understand pediatric sizing, these are all pediatric, this is all pediatric equipment. You can't even use it in an adult, if you tried to intubate an adult with the tube that we use for children, you would not be able to give them enough oxygen. And so all of this is literally just for children, and all of it has been, um, deliberately destroyed. Um, next slide. Um, this is me on the inside of the hospital trying to scavenge, those are bottles of Bencomis and antibiotics, trying to scavenge what supplies we could. Because we were the first teams that made it to that hospital. Um, and so the Ministry of Health tested a lot of supplies we, we could and bringing them back with us. Next slide. Um, this picture is of, uh, one of my personal heroes. Um, thank you. Um, this is the Corpus Amofofsofia, the Corpus Amofofsofia is my colleague and my role model. He is a pediatrician who refused to abandon his patients despite multiple warnings from the Israeli military to leave the hospital and evacuate. But this was the hospital that was the furthest north at the time in the last moment, shape one, and the lifeline of anybody who is north of Gaza City. And so he stayed until the last moment. His son was killed while he was treating patients in the hospital and his son is buried on the hospital grounds. The last day when the hospital was surrounded by tanks, he walked out in his white coat to appeal to the Israelis to, uh, to grant his patients permission, um, to be evacuated further south. And he was arrested for the crime of providing medical aid. Dr. Samofsofia has been in Israeli custody now for about eight months and has not been released thus far. Next slide. And so I had a little bit of a fangirl moment and so I, I went, I took the same, um, walk, the same journey you took. But I will tell you, it is not the same when you're walking down that path and it's just destruction versus when you have to walk down knowing that there are tanks on the other end. Next slide. This life hospital is Indonesian hospital, um, this hospital is shaped like a hexagon, um, and so this hospital is doing better. Um, do you guys have any guess why? Well, because the Israelis occupied it, it used to as a military base. And so they decided they don't want to burn down this hospital. Um, and so, next slide. Um, when they finally withdrew from the north and evacuated from the hospital, Ministry of Health came in and pulled out nine bodies from the hospital. Eight of whom were able to be identified, this last person was unable to be identified because he was in advanced state decomposition. But they found his backpack with him and so they put his backpack on top of him in the hope that somebody would be able to identify who he was and bring him back to his family. Next slide. Again, even though this hospital fare better than others, does not mean it was treated with the dignity and respect that a hospital deserves. You can see there are bullet holes through the walls, um, and actually even the front door has, uh, holes where it's been shown through, but I don't think happened in the presentation. Next slide. Yeah, and then this is the last, um, hospital we passed by. This is all the way in the far north in an area called Beth Hamun, this is Beth Hamun General Hospital. This is the pediatric ward, again, cribs, this was treating children, does not matter. Next slide. This is just a map of all the hospitals that Gaza had before the war, Gaza had about thirty-six different hospitals. Um, when we left the north, there was about three still functioning, and I think in total there was about five or six. Next slide. Uh, and then this again, just, I, I don't know, it's just the sunsets in Gaza or something else. Uh, next slide. Next slide. Um, so we got delayed ultimately in Gaza by another six days because we had been trying to leave from the north to stage in the south before finally exfiltrating. And so, um, because the ceasefire happened, uh, the Israeli military was deconstructing the Nasserin Corridor. And we were told, um, that we would not be allowed to cross it at the time. Um, and so we actually reached out to, uh, press, we reached out to our embassy. And I have a voice recording from the US Embassy in Jerusalem telling me flat out, um, I'm sorry, we had no control over the Israelis. Despite the fact that the United States has sent, has spent sixty billion dollars to the Israelis in the past three years. Um, we apparently, that apparently grants us no control over the Israelis to protect American citizens. Of the thirteen doctors and nurses who were with us, eleven of us were American citizens. We reached out to our government, our government told us, you guys are secondary to the wishes of the Israelis. But we took it on the chin and, um, focused on doing good work, uh, while we could. This is a CT, um, image of an eight month old who suffered a shrapnel injury to the head. Um, she survived because while you see an entry wound up there and a lot of the gray white stuff is bleeding in the brain. Um, and you see a track towards the back, it did not, it did not create a wound through, it actually stopped on the back part or the inside part of her skull. And so she did not bleed out. And so we say she's fortunate because now she has permanent neurological disability and seizures, but she's alive. Next slide. Um, but the other thing that the shrapnel did is it tore a hole in her esophagus, it can, um, and her, um, her trachea. And so her body formed an abnormal connection between the esophagus and the trachea. Um, meaning that anytime she would produce spit, it would go into her lungs. Um, and so she can't survive like this. And so we decided, um, to try and stage a repair of that, uh, with the team that we had. The problem is we needed CT images, there is one functioning CT in all of, uh, the north and all of Gaza. Um, and so this is a child who is dependent on a ventilator and I carried her in my arms. And we, um, gave her oxygen via bag for about two hours while we were able to get imaging to decide if this would even be, uh, a hospital repair. Next slide. This is her father, when we came back, when we talked to him and we told him that it's possible to do this repair. Um, I put this picture in specifically, um, because I feel like too often in the, in the news media and, uh, in our social circles, there's a demonization of ground black bodies. This father has a beard, this father is brown. And I saw this father sit here and sing to this child and tell her that soon, just one more surgery, she should be able to come home with him. This man lost his wife and his four year old child, and this is all he has left in the world. And I saw him sit there singing to this child and making promises to her. Um, next slide. That, the little black spot under the white dot, that's the entry wound to her head. So when I say the shrapnel is the most dangerous thing in Gaza, that is what I mean. If you are under a bomb and your body is liquefied, you are fortunate. If you are near a bomb, you can suffer grievous injury like this. Next slide. Uh, I should probably add, this is, if you guys haven't figured it out, there's a little bit of graphic imagery here. Um, and so this is us trying to intubate this child through the massive hole she has in her neck. Um, the hole is so big that the tube does not actually work, but the tube has a balloon cough on the bottom. And so we just inflated the balloon and kind of like manually held it in. Next slide. Um, and then this is the ICU staff who's taking care of her. I will say, um, doctors in Gaza are probably some of the most heroic and, um, people I've met. But even outside of that, they are a model of professionalism and knowledge. All of these doctors, when we were grounded, um, if we had a patient, even the guy in flip flops, um, when we were, and, um, we would have a patient whose blood pressure is dropping. And they'd be like, okay, this patient needs epinephrine. I'm used to it in the US, like I'll pull out a book or I'll pull out a reference, figure out the dosing. Pharmacy will double check my dosing and confirm to me that this is all correct. And so they'd be talking like, okay, give her epinephrine, how much? And so I pull out my phone, trying to pull up my references and look, but already one of them's like, no, epinephrine for this age, point zero one milligrams per kilo. This is the dose she needs. Like, I don't know how you guys do this. You guys have this amazing ability and like breadth of knowledge, um, to treat patients that even I don't have where in the US. Next slide. Uh, and then one of the other fun things that we got a chance to do is I got to go and see a school. Um, the primary second language that people learn in Gaza is English. And so, um, I don't know if you can hear, the teacher's talking like, letter A. Um, and so she said, another A, apple. And so they'll say it, so it's in Arabic. And so, I don't know if you guys know this, all the kids are different ages. All the kids are different ages because they've been out of school for about two years. And so even going back to school was not about strictly learning, it was about trying to create that normalcy for these kids again. And you can't make a class of just eight year olds because all the eight year olds, some have been killed, some have actively fled. And so you work with the people you have in the area. Also, most families and new families will not send all their kids to school at the same time. Because, um, if something were to happen at that school, they would lose their entire family. Next slide. Again, this is on our day, the day that we were due to actually even go to the south. As we're driving by, these kids just turned the down power line into a swing because they're kids. Next slide. Um, and then I had, one of the most emotional times, uh, we got to see people who, once the Nasserin Corridor was cut about two, three months into, uh, the genocide that's happening. Um, people were no longer able to move from the south to the north or vice versa. And so when the ceasefire happened, um, and they finally cleared the Nasserin Corridor, um, that day, hundreds of thousands of people went from the south to the north to see their families. And so we actually got to see people reunited with their loved ones that they hadn't seen in a year and a half. Um, their loved ones that they didn't even know if they were going to see again. And so you can see this man is very emotional, uh, right side, this man is hugging his father, um, I don't know, it may not play. Uh, next slide. Um, and this is actually what it looked like when we were trying to go towards the south. There's just a caravan of hundreds of thousands of people walking from the south to the north. Next slide. Um, I thought this was interesting. Man on the left looks American, that's because he is, he's from Tampa, Florida. Um, he is one of the, um, private military or private, whatever, security, um, people who are hired to run the, uh, new inspection site for the north, uh, for, uh, people coming from the south to the north. And so he, he, he was excited and he's like, oh my God, you guys are American, talk to me, what's, you know, how's it going? He was initially, he's like, I was so scared when I deployed here, I was scared that people are going to like target me. And he's like, people have been high fiving me and waving at me all day. And it was just, it just kind of, despite having been there for three weeks, it highlighted the reality that people don't see the, uh, the population of Gaza necessarily as civilians. They don't see them as human beings who have hopes and dreams and aspirations. He could not understand why the people who had been deprived of seeing their loved ones of their home for a year and a half would be high fiving him and saluting him instead of shooting at him. Next slide. And this is Habiba when I finally made it to the south. When they told me Habiba hadn't been evacuated, um, I thought for sure that she had died. Um, and so I was overjoyed when I saw her. And you can see already that a gross is that this point is no longer in her hands, it has spread beyond both elbows and her leg is in her hands. It has spread beyond both elbows and her leg is covered up. You can't see it. But I was still overjoyed that she was alive. After this picture, she spent another two and a half weeks in the south before she was finally able to be evacuated. Um, during that time, she needed to be intubated. Um, she developed sepsis. Her situation got even worse, but thankfully she was finally evacuated by the Jordanian Air Force. Next slide. And then this is our last night in Gaza. Um, also same view for the, um, non-medical complex. You can see the dialysis building over there. Um, next slide. Um, and I always like to say, um, I left a part of me in Gaza. I left my heart in Gaza. Um, that is, uh, before you leave, everybody donates blood. Um, and so it is with great honor that I say, um, I did actually leave a part of me in Gaza. Next slide. And then this is on the way out. You can see all these trucks just waiting to get permission to come and they don't go into Gaza. They drop off their supplies at the Tarasolmo Cross and then trucks come because they have to come and pick them up. But even that, going from Israel to an area controlled by Israel, the Israeli military will have a lot of men to do so. Next slide. And then this is Hannah, this is Habiba, probably about, um, two, three months back after she was finally evacuated. This is how she looks now. I only ever knew Habiba when she was in pain. I only ever knew her when she was sick. And so I know this image might be hard for people to look at, but this image actually lifted my heart because I got to see her sign. I got to see that she was alive. Habiba got a chance, but there's still three thousand children waiting on the World Health Organization and the Gaza Health Ministry's list, um, waiting for urgent evacuation from Gaza who do not have the same notoriety that she has, who have not had the same chance that she has. Next slide. Yeah. By the way, for those who know to speak Arabic, Habiba means the beloved one. Next slide. Her brother always had to vote in her lap. And so this is him playing. What's he saying? Random noises. It doesn't, he, he's not actually saying anything. He's just making random noises. Oh, okay. When he's saying, wada, 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 wada. Uh, okay. Yeah. Um, I'd like to finish, um, by talking about, uh, you know, the people I have lost since I was there. This is my friend, Muhammed Shal, Muhammed Shal. Um, recently graduated medical school, was working, um, as a first-year trainee surgeon. Um, and he was actually volunteering for the past year and a half. And so Muhammed Shal was on his way to the Indonesian hospital after the ceasefire. Uh, he was in a taxi and, um, you don't know who rides with you in these taxis. Um, and so the Israeli military using, mind you, AI software developed here in Denver, yay, um, decided that he was collateral damaged. And so they bombed the taxi. My friend was killed. And so, um, I always like to dedicate my, my talks to, uh, to him and to, you know, thousands of healthcare workers who would be killed in this genocide. Next slide. And then this is my friend who is still alive. If anybody's interested in hearing, um, voices from Gaza, this is my friend, Zedine. Um, he's the doc who was earlier in the slide. Um, I became very close with him. He writes in English if anybody's interested. Um, he, he has a interesting take on things because he wasn't even supposed to be in Gaza. He had actually graduated medical school, came to visit his family to celebrate before he was supposed to go to Germany and start his training. And so he was supposed to leave Gaza on the 10th. He arrived on the 1st and October 7th happened in this other board. And so he's now been in Gaza for about two and a half years. But he's, like I said, great reference in English, um, for those interested in hearing, uh, voices of the people of Gaza. But that's all I got for you. Thank you. Uh, so just in closing, um, for everybody, I know these images are hard to see. Um, and I know it can be very easy to adopt the defeatist attitude, but like I said, there's still two million people in Gaza who deserve our protection, who deserve, um, our government not wasting our tax dollars, um, to inflict previous injury upon them. And so that is one of the reasons why all of us are here today because we want to send a message to our government that this is not okay. And I'm very privileged and honored to have Aaron here doing exactly that. So thank you all so much for being here, for caring about Gaza and for supporting Aaron.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Very well said. And just as Mohammed displayed an incredible amount of compassion and courage in doing what he did, Aaron Stone is showing compassion and courage in a different way, but for the same reason. So I'd like to introduce you now to the candidate I'm supporting to a city council in Boulder, Aaron Stone.
Thank you, Guy. Thank you, Dr. Mohammed. Um, if I take anything away from this, it's, um, I'm not going to be censor myself up here. I want to be completely honest about everything that I've done and everything that I've seen. And, um, so I'm, I'm a computer engineer by trade. I, I grew up in Columbus, Ohio, um, and I've been in Boulder for about 12 years with my family. My beautiful wife is sitting right here. My kids are in, uh, older Valley School, uh, right now, so they can't be here. Um, I was, uh, working in the field of quantum computing until about three weeks ago, but, uh, I'll get more to that later. Um, this all started for me probably, I would say around the beginning of the year when I saw a group, uh, walking down Pearl Street and they were carrying Israeli flags. Well, this really goes back a lot further. Um, you know, I've been following this for quite a while, but, uh, when I saw this happening after everything we've seen going on in Gaza for the past two years, um, I immediately felt anger. Um, people are walking down the street holding Israeli flags while that same country is committing a genocide in Gaza. And, uh, my background, I've been following this for quite a while. When I was in high school, we had exchange students come to, uh, to Ohio. Uh, the first year I was a freshman and we had a, um, a Palestinian exchange student and he stayed with us for a week. And, uh, there was a group of Palestinians, a group of Israelis. You know, at that time, they, they seemed very friendly toward each other and they laughed together. And I, I think one of my fondest memories is we went to the countryside to visit my uncle there. Uh, he has firearms, so the Palestinians were able to actually shoot guns, which is not something they're allowed to even own or touch in Israel. So, um, I remember they were quite thrilled with that. Um, the second year, we had a, a Jewish Israeli exchange student stay with us, uh, for a week as well. And we created many lasting friendships. And that, that was a real different time, though, um, many of you might be able enough to remember as I do, Yasser Arafat shaking the hand of Yitzhak Rabin with Bill Clinton in the background. And we thought that there was going to be some kind of peace and some kind of restored justice for the Palestinian people, but, um, we know what happened to Yitzhak. He was assassinated and things kind of went downhill from there. And I, I just remember Bibi Netanyahu lecturing Obama in the White House when he told him that they were going to back out of Oslo. I believe that was in the early 2000s. Uh, I was watching the entire time during the Gaza War and speaking out against that. I think at the time, many Americans were still in support of Israel and it was very disturbing to me, but I had to watch, watch while all of that happened. Um, but I will say if there's any one redeeming thing that has come out of the latest conflict is that more Americans are starting to wake up. And I believe the latest poll said that seventy percent of Americans believe that we should stop sending weapons to Israel. And... Yeah, so I, I remember I embarrassed my family on Pearl Street Hall. I confronted Run for Their Lives immediately. I was the only person, uh, at that time that I, I saw even protesting. Um, and, uh, you know, a lot of people were looking at me and I felt very alone. And I did some research online. I was like, who, you know, there's gotta be people in Boulder that's going to stand up to this. I couldn't find much at all. Um, and then the firebombing happened. We remember, uh, that was horrific and unacceptable. But it was also used by the media as a justification that there's antisemitism going on in this country. And, um, the media really pushed that narrative quite a bit as we've seen, uh, almost all of our city council with the exception of one person, plus our mayor signed on a le, signed onto a letter that declared that that attack was anti-Semitic. Our superintendent of schools at BVSD has published a letter for back to school, going back to school for the kids, that spoke of a partnership with the ADL, which as we know has long said that any criticism of Israel is antisemitism. So we're getting a lot of pushback and censorship right here in our own community. And all of these things culminated in me, um, to protest Run for Their Lives a few more times. And along with, uh, some very vocal supporters and, um, with the fact that the attack actually happened, Run for Their Lives had made another media press release that, uh, stated that they were afraid and they were going to go underground and they, they stopped reporting where they were going to, uh, be meeting at going forward after that. Um, so before, before that announcement happened, um, all of this culminated to get me to run. Um, I started protesting at the corner of Cannon and Broadway at 11 o'clock on Saturdays with the other people asking for freedom for Palestine. We've heard several horrible things for people. We've been called rape lists. We've been called Hamas supporters. Uh, people have made gun signs at us, but we've also got a lot of support. People going to buy honky and support for us. Um, so that group really encouraged me to run and I didn't think I had time to do it, but they've been very supportive. I'm very grateful. So if there's any one thing that's come out of this is that I've met all of these caring people and that I'll live with that for the rest of my life. Um, but I have no regrets and I just want to let you know that, uh, Run for Their Lives, there's a few of them that actually taped or recorded, um, our protest. And once I announced that I was running for city council, they leaked these images to not only the local news, but the Times of Israel, the New York Post and the Washington Free Beacon. And, um, I was getting great reviews of my work and all of a sudden my manager ghosted me and then six weeks later, my contract was suddenly canceled. Um, so I think this goes into why it's important and why this is a local issue. I, I think we all need to speak up. And I have no regrets about losing my job. This company was funded by BlackRock. BlackRock is, by the way, one of the same funders that, um, of the company that Dr. Mohammed was referring to that does that AI technology. So I'm not surprised I lost my job and as soon as it went national, I, I knew what was going to happen. And I knew the risks when I started this as well. But I am, I am not sad and I have no regrets for doing this. And I, I just want to mention as well that, uh, you know, it's not just me being censored. We have at least one other supporter here in Boulder who has been targeted by police and arrested for harassment of city council candidates. Um, and we're also seeing deportations of green card holders, which is why I'm telling people that are not naturalized or natural US citizens who are close to me to not get involved in my campaign. And, uh, we've run into a lot of people that want to donate, but they're scared to give their names and addresses. So the, uh, the fear is very brittle. And we're also seeing colleges censor speech, going after groups that are pro-Palestinian. So we all need to speak up and say something. So I want to talk about what's happening here with Boulder itself. So we are invested in four companies, Microsoft, Caterpillar, Toyota and Cisco. And all of these companies have been shown are invested in the genocide going on in Gaza for various reasons. For the past two years, and I, and by the way, I just started going to council meetings since I started running and it's only been about two months now. But I'm told that for the past two years, council public comment has been filled with people asking council to divest from these companies. And so far, only one person has stuck with it to, to continue to try to divest. Now I'm told that two other council members earlier in February did vote to divest, but they've more recently backed away from that when we talked about revisiting those investments. Also, some of these council people who, who referred to this attack as being antisemitic have also referred to another council person who is trying to divest is also being antisemitic. So I just want to point out the weaponization of that word and why it's wrong for our government to be using that word against anybody right now. When I grew up, antisemitism was hating people for their background, being a Semite. And by the way, Palestinians are Semitic people. So, so the word is being misused continually for life. But I'm not going to argue that point because it doesn't seem to click. The fact is the word's being weaponized and it's wrong to be using it. The attack that happened on Pearl Street, the attacker specifically said it was because of what Israel was doing to Palestinians. And I think we should stick with that and not let people target us because of him. So these, these public commentaries are going for forty-five minutes and council has been even talking about eliminating them altogether. They've stopped allowing the filming of the people speaking as well. They're taking steps to censor speech. And, um, so far it hasn't completely happened yet. But there's also another good reason. With all these people who are speaking and they're complaining that we should focus on city issues, what if we just divested? And all of these people wouldn't be filling up public comment. More people would be coming actually talking about more local issues. Not that this is not a local issue, but that's a more practical reason why we need to divest. Uh, the people targeting me, they're obviously saying this isn't a local issue. We should stick to local issues. You know, they're calling us crazy. They're targeting us other ways. So, yeah, I think that's, that covers everything that I really wanted to say about all of this right now. So, um, I am going to be, um, step vastly moving forward to try to win this, uh, race, but there are several well-funded corporate candidates that are, that, that are, you know, they've got a lot of guard signs out for one. They've got a lot of funding and they've got a lot of, um, they've got a lot of propaganda out there supporting them. And I can tell you personally that there's, there's two people that are actually trying to divest. There's myself and there's another gentleman, Rob Smoke, who's also running to divest. We've been disinvited from forums and the machine is trying to keep our, our voice silenced. So I wanted to thank you all for being here and, um, please support this divestment and, and please vote for me and Rob Smoke for city council. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Aaron. That was really a beautiful talk and I think you really hit the nail on the head. For anybody interested in donating to Aaron's campaign, we have the QR code up there, also on the table over here. And at this time, I'd like to, uh, turn the event over to the order. And at this time, I'd like to turn the event over to the audience. Now is the time for questions and answers. We have almost twenty minutes. So if you would line up at one of the mics here, or one of the mics here, no more than three people in line, please. And Aaron and Mohammed, would you come up here? You can address your questions to either Dr. Mohammed or to Aaron.
Folks, a little technical from the back. If you are speaking at a mic, there's a little switch on the top. Please switch it, please slide it towards you. Some of them have gotten turned off.
Testing.
I'm not intentionally cutting you. Just slide that little thing up towards you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mohammed and Aaron. Dr. Mohammed, I'm really impressed. You seem very well-balanced. There's as much joy, you find as much joy as you do sorrow. And just, I know what I'm suffering. What advice would you have for me and others? And as well as what's your, what are your coping mechanisms?
I have a tree up here, you want to see it? Sorry, I just think it's breaking.
I'm also loud. So for me, one of the big things that I like to remind myself is while this genocide's been going on for about two and a half years, the systems that have created this genocide have existed for the past seventy years and are heavily entrenched, both within our government and in terms of international politics. And so it is horrific, the images that we are seeing. And I wish an immediate solution could be found. But at the same time, I recognize that we are working against an enemy that is so vast and so entrenched that, yes, even something like going to Gaza, even something like being here, or something like having Aaron running for city council is a victory, is a win. Because these are all things that, I will tell you, from when I was five years old, going to fundraisers for ambulances in the West Bank, these are all things that did not used to happen. And as Aaron said, now seventy percent of the US population believes we should stop sending weapons to Israel. That is progress. And so there are positive notes, but at the same time, there is a lot of pain that the people of Gaza are going through. And they know that, they recognize that their situation is difficult, and make themselves feel relieved when they see somebody like yourself coming to an event like this and speaking for them.
And your mic is back, thank you.
Oh, cool. Thank you.
That speaks to another question that goes to Aaron. Because of this huge issue, have you been able to get into other platforms to bring up the issue between Zionism and humanity?
Can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, what venues have you been able to address to speak to this issue?
As well as speaking, wow. I've been to several forums, and they've been very difficult. We were on KGMU and asked this question, and we all got to speak on it. And I would say that most other candidates either seem to be taking, I mean, other than Rob Smoke and myself, they either seem to take a middle-of-the-road line, say, "I can see both sides of it," without committing to divestment, or they will say something along the lines of, "I think this is a city issue, and we shouldn't be trying to change the politics of national issues." Which I wanted to point out as well, and I think we might have touched on this, but these same technologies that are being used to target Gaza are now being used here by ICE. And we need to think about that as well.
Sorry, just to add, for those who aren't aware, I'm running for the local office, so I'm happy to say. The company is Palantir. Their headquarters is in downtown Denver, and they're actually moving to Cherry Creek because of people coming and protesting at their headquarters. Palantir manufactures AI software that is used to identify and target our neighbors within our community to break and kidnap our neighbors. And so, yes, it is a local issue.
Salaam alaikum.
Wa alaikum.
Thank you. I'm an Iranian-American Sufi Muslim, peace and not violence activist. And I'm a retired psychologist. So I had one question. I was thinking about PTSD. I thought my dog was dealing with continuous trauma, multi-generational and continuous traumas. If you could speak a couple of words. Also, as soon as I became aware of Aaron's courageous run for city council, I said, "I'm gonna do my best to try to get him as many votes as possible." I've already voted for him. So I did a, I organized a same oak flat vigil on the Indigenous Peoples' Day. We're dealing with indigenous people from all over the world. I am from Iran as an indigenous person. So we're dealing with the same issue. And also, there is another event coming up. We have flyers, and this is about the prospect of US-Iran, US/Israel-Iran peace or more war, and latest, and the latest on Gaza. And this is in part to support further Aaron's candidacy and further Sergio Atala is gonna be one of the speakers. There are flyers up here, so, but please answer my psychologist's question as what do you do with your own PTSD or related?
Yeah, I mean, first off, everybody knows I have PTSD. One of the things that when you talk to the people there, they will mention, and that they're very thankful about the ceasefire for, is most of them will tell you, "We haven't even had time to grieve, because, you know, today your uncle dies, tomorrow it's your cousin." When do you have time to sit and process that loss? The other thing people should know, there's something within our genetic code called epigenetics, which affects the expression of our genes. That is something that is passed from mother to child. It is something that can actually be impacted by trauma. You can actually look up research articles that talk about mice that have been stressed in one generation, three generations later, their genetic material still shows impact from that trauma that they suffered. And so the trauma that these kids, that these families are enduring today in Gaza, we will still not see the effects of it yet for a hundred years yet to come. But at the same time, I will tell you, myself personally, I have been managing my PTSD with a lot of therapy and a lot of actions like this. Coming to places like this where there is a receptive audience of people who want to learn, who I feel share kind of that collective care that we all have for the world, that to me is inspiration. It helps me deal with a lot of that grief that I have from being there.
Just to whet your appetite a little bit for the event that Moji was talking about, I'm in a local group called ArtTenda, which is the arts and culture of Indonesian, Indonesian, sorry. We play Indonesian gamelan music. And so far, we've got like a loose commitment from our leader to actually play there. But even if we, you know, there's multiple members of the group who are trying to get a group that'll do that. But even if not, I'll definitely be playing some Suhling music at least, and maybe my wife will accompany me with the sahram as well, with a couple of my kids.
And I'll be singing my Persian lyrics on Imagine, Imagine Peace. And my eighty-seven-year-old housemate is gonna sing the original Imagine. So October 1st, 5:00 PM, starting with a clock at the theater O, and Sister Michelle is there. And so flyers are up on the table.
Sorry, that's not my memory.
No, I'm sorry. No, I'm right.
Thank you so much for what you're doing, Sarah.
Hello? Yeah, I have a question for the doctor. Rather technical, very moving presentation, very informative. But when I see the news that is coming out of Gaza, one of the questions I always have that I have not heard answered is, how is the health ministry able to get the figures so quickly about casualties? I don't know if you know anything about that, but since you were there, I just wonder if you could comment on that for those of us who consume news in this country and have no idea how some of this stuff is being done. Particularly because, as you masterfully pointed out, all these hospitals have been destroyed, and many of the healthcare workers find their lives in the news.
Yeah. So when I say the hospitals have been destroyed, that does not mean health on the whole has been destroyed. At Shifah Hospital, what you don't see is there's a small, one, like literally one-story administrative building in front of a Shifah Hospital that's been converted into an emergency room because the rest of the hospital has been utterly destroyed. When people are talking about the numbers that we see coming out of Gaza, we typically assume, the people who have been there and who've talked to people on the ground, that these numbers are a vast underestimation. Because what the health ministry actually does is every day, there's somebody at each of these hospital sites. When these bodies show up, and that's why even the bodies that were buried under the rubble had to come to the morgue first, they have to come there, be identified, and then either the health ministry can find their national identifier number, or the family will have their national identifier card. And from there, they say that this is another person that has been killed. And so right now, the estimate is like, what, sixty, seventy thousand? That is a gross undercount. ALA has estimated it to be over a hundred and eighty thousand, and more recent projections are closer to three hundred thousand. But again, those are all bodies that are still remaining under the rubble or died and did not have the proper paperwork for verification.
Thank you. I have a quick question. How can we help? Can we, could you give us some advice as to how we can help orphans? What we can do, where we can go, and where's the best place to also donate our funds so that it's used to help all those kids?
Sure. So here in Colorado, I work with Pops and Children's Relief Foundation. Of, what is it, they have adopted like eight thousand orphans in Gaza, which is about a third of the total orphans. But there are a bunch of different organizations doing work on the ground. I met with a medical student there who started a foundation called the SAMIR Foundation, S-A-M-I-R. And he is literally within Gaza, collecting and distributing medical supplies, food. And because he's part of the healthcare system, he also can address kind of local needs on the ground. At the end of the day, hopefully, any donation you make will not go to waste. Like I said, the scale of devastation is so vast that it's a drop in the bucket, but at the same time, it's a significant one.
I've been to every meeting of the council since the start. It's a comment, not a question. To help people decide who to vote for, Mark Wallach and Nicole Spear, and I believe Matt Benjamin, have all been telling the blatant lie that there's some rule that council shouldn't get involved in national affairs. And that's, there's an actual law. It's easy to find. If you want to know all this in Boulder, just Google Boulder laws. Then search for national policy or foreign policy, and you will see the law. And it says they shouldn't get involved unless they have the time and resources to do a thorough job. In this case, that's easy, because all the international organizations, the criminal court, the UN have already made reports. They all agree it's genocide. So all they need to do is look at those reports. They don't need to do any original work. So I wouldn't vote for any of these people who are lying to you, the people who pay their salaries about the laws they are sworn to uphold. Mark Wallach actually being a lawyer. So I'm gonna vote, of course, for Aaron and Rob, but also I would recommend Rachel Rose Isaacson, who has, you know, given some compassion to Gazans and the homeless. And Max Lord, who, when Aaron and Rob were excluded from the forum at the Nomad Theater, spoke up, took his few seconds of time to protest them being excluded. So maybe that'll help.
Hey, also, just, I'm actually the president of all the city councils before. They, you guys, this is maybe due to all you guys, but it's not due to them. So they carry the added responsibility of going and assisting.
Yeah, I'd also add that Max Lord actually walked out of the forum right here in this room on wildfires that I was excluded from as well. So he did it twice, so I do give him kudos for that. But yeah, what you're saying brought back the reason why I moved to Boulder. So we have a history of talking about international affairs. So we've talked about South Sudan. But for me specifically, it was when there were protests walking down Pearl Street, and the city council voted for a ceasefire in condemnation of what we were doing in Iraq. And this was back in the early 2000s. And when I saw that and heard that, I knew Boulder was where I wanted to live. So I think this current city council has turned its back, actually, on the founding principles of Boulder. And I would like to see us go back to that.
Yes, I had a question for the doctor. It's pretty obvious that this destruction is indiscriminate. Those pictures look like Hiroshima the day after. But my question is, what is the objective of the IDF and the government of Israel in conducting this pause?
I don't pretend to know, or I don't claim to speak for them. You can just look at specifically their own quotes. They have multiple times, or Netanyahu, a couple of days after October 7th, when he came out and said, "We're dealing with Amalek, and we will treat them as such." When the Minister of Defense of Israel came out and said, "No food, no water, we'll enter Gaza. We're dealing with human animals, and we will treat them as such." And so when somebody mentioned that the finding of genocide has been found to be credible by the ICC, genocide requires intent. The intent to do collective punishment on the people of Gaza has been vocalized multiple times by high-ranking Israeli officials. And so they're telling you what they want to do. I have nothing to do in the in-between, but they're telling you that they intend to commit genocide on the people of Gaza. Whether that is to force them into exile or to just embrace them completely, I'm not sure. But yeah, just listen to what they have to say.
Thank you, Librarians, Dave. You guys are awesome. Support your librarians.
I have been, whoops. My name is John Horton. I live in South Boulder. I have been, I guess, involved with the most going on in Gaza for many years through my daughter. My daughter worked for UNHCR, which is the, it's the UN High Commission on Refugee Refugees. She worked in places that I wish she didn't. But she did, she worked in Gaza, she worked in Baghdad, she worked in Tunisia, among some other places. And you can see why a father would not want his daughter to go into this. I was, she's not such a big woman. I have a picture of her when she was in Baghdad with her blue helmet, her flak vest, and her, she had a flak vest on her thighs. Every day, she went from the ozone to the airport where all of the refugees were. Her job was really to talk to the refugees and get their stories. What she did with their stories was then she knew which countries would take which. What she did with their stories was then she knew which countries would take which stories. So she would then try to match up a refugee with the country that might take them. But all she did was essentially hear stories. She, uh, worked for the UN for about ten years and then and then she couldn't anymore. So she goes to name now a little bit better with that. But a couple of questions. Aaron, you said there are two council members who are running or being funded by, you know, corporate entities. Name their names.
Uh, it's all right. Sorry, I'm hanging out in the back because I see this nice rug. Um, I think my wife's gonna jump up and hit me if I don't take my shoes off, so. I think I'll just take my shoes off and stand here. Um, yeah, I mean, I don't mean to say that I know for sure that they're being corporate-funded, but I know they have a lot of backing and there is a lot of money behind them. And actually, I believe there's at least six people that are getting a lot of backing and funding. So I, I don't have a window into who's giving them money. But there are rules in, um, the city about who can fund and how much. So the maximum donation you're supposed to give is a hundred dollars from any single organization.
And their names?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Oh, the very well-funded people. And I'm not saying that they're all necessarily bad. I know there's, there's good qualities, I think, to everybody, but I would say.
You mentioned there were two.
There's four incumbents. There's actually six that are very well-funded. I would say the incumbents who are, um, let's see, we're talking about Lauren Folgers, which honestly, in the past, she was actually the person who did vote to divest, but she didn't look to revisit, um, the investments at the most recent one. Uh, we have Nicole Spear, uh, we have Mark Wallach, we have Matt Benjamin, uh, so four incumbents. And then I would say Jenny Robbins and, um, Rob Kaplan are also very well-funded. Uh, I would say Rob Kaplan seems like a pretty nice guy. He's a firefighter. I think he wants to deal with a lot of wildfire issues personally. But I, I believe Jenny Robbins is a very vocal Zionist, and so is Mark Wallach.
And they're funded by Antisemitic Colorado. They're endorsed. They're endorsed.
Yeah, maybe you might know who the six people are. Did they get, you're only allowed to give three endorsements if I remember correctly.
Yeah, there's five people that are being endorsed by Antisemitic Colorado. And that's Rob Kaplan and Mark Wallach and Nicole Spear and, and Jen Robbins. And, so, Matt Benjamin. Yeah, Matt Benjamin. Those are ones to steer away from.
And I believe what Israel is doing is antisemitic. The genocide campaign of Colorado is antisemitic.
I don't like to, but these people stay alive.
Yep, I'd love to have them alive to speak.
There's one other question that I have, probably to you and maybe some people in the audience. You said when you were out protesting against the the, the people who were marching for the hostages, I don't remember. But you felt very alone because you were all alone. Why were you all alone? I had a couple of questions, though. Why were you all alone?
I can tell you all of the encounters, I believe. Uh, the first time, I was just out on Pearl Street with my family to enjoy the mall. And that was the first time I encountered them. I had never heard of them before. And there was nobody there. And of course, I'm the only one yelling at this group. The second time, I was meeting a friend at Avanti, and we saw him walking outside. And, uh, you know, after everything, I just yelled, free Palestine. But I noticed my now good friend, Lencido, who was the only person following them. And I now understand that it was for the past year, if I remember correctly, carrying a small Palestinian flag. And she was excluded from the group. And, um, you know, when this group says they're marching for the hostages, I just want to point out that they seem to neglect the over two million hostages in Gaza. They neglect all of the hostages that are being kept in Israeli prisons. And we even asked members of the group, oh, why don't you, if you want to carry flags of all these countries that have hostages, how about you invite somebody to carry a Palestinian flag as well for those people? And we've been denied that.
Here's the question is, is that, but also, why wasn't anybody with you? I'd like to, I mean, you said it was very lonely, this afternoon.
Well, it, it, that's interesting. Uh, um, as I got involved more, uh, I would say we did get a few more people that are willing to stand up to them. But, um, if you recall the story that I said about me being targeted and other people being targeted, I think that's exactly why people are afraid to speak up and protest. Because they're afraid of the consequences that might come from it. And I'll tell you, no, no, can we get this to be like us?
Yeah, let me just say one more thing. Now, this is important.
How about one more? How about one more? Yeah, one more, please.
Why is nobody else in this room taking any action? You stand on the corner for one hour a week and you think that what you're doing makes a difference?
What are you doing?
What am I doing?
Yeah.
Go over to Cherry Bell. Go over to Cherry Bell's hands.
Well, I, I would, I would say for one, I decided to do something. I'm running for city council. Anyway, um, I would say it's not fair to judge each of these people without knowing their history. And I would also encourage everybody in this room to run for office, please. You know, I'm, I'm an introvert computer engineer, and two months ago, I never thought I'd be standing on the stage doing this. But I am frankly just amazed. And I, even though everything is happening to me, um, it, it's something I'm willing to bear and I'm happy to bear it. Because I feel like I'm finally getting up and doing something instead of, as you mentioned, sir, standing on the corner and just shouting into the void. Because I decided I don't want to do that. That's why I ran. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you talk about more anger if you guys want?
There have been systemic dehumanization of people like me and Palestinians and other people of color. Systemic dehumanization causing. Yes, 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 I really understand. I just want to say, it is systemic. Yes, it is my place to say systemic dehumanization is what is causing the, causing the genocide.
Sit down.
Hello everyone, my name is Laura Pitekimi and I live in LaGuardia. And I've been supporting Aaron's campaign. Um, but in the past two years, I've been, um, creating and managing horrific campaigns for two families in Gaza. So that's my work. Messaging to them, hearing their stories, donating to them, asking for money, dealing with the complexity of transferring funds to Gaza from the US, which is a nightmare. Um, so my question for Dr. Mohammed is, I, I follow a family where the mother lost her husband. So I guess from Palestinian standpoint, the children are orphans. Um, and the father of the deceased, um, took away all the money that was of his son. And, um, so now she has nothing because the wife doesn't have much power. Um, so she has two toddlers and newborns who can eat because there's no formula in Gaza. And so they're, they were asking me, because I'm the US, so I'm a super girl, um, if I can find, um, a contact in Gaza or outside Gaza of an organization who helps orphans? If you have that information, would like to send it to me?
Yeah, like I said, I do work with PCR. They, uh, I don't, uh, I, I don't do just the same work you do in terms of one-on-one with, uh, with families. And I'm very sorry that she's going through that. Um, and every group is saying, there's hunger, which means, you know, um, hunger will make people even leave their faith. Um, because these are people living horrific circumstances. And so sometimes, yes, people in Gaza are human beings just like us, and that means that they don't take the best course of action. Um, but I'm happy to touch base with you afterwards and, um, get, get your info and see how, how we can help.
Thank you.
Hello, this is specifically for Dr. Mohammed. Uh, my little sister just started medical school and is starting to develop her political and international consciousness. And I wanted to ask if there are any words of wisdom or inspiration that you can give to her and the younger generation of medical professionals on their role as healthcare workers and also as advocates?
Give me one sec to find what I'm looking for and I'll tell you. So look up the World Medical Association, uh, its Declaration of Geneva. Um, this is something that, um, I read while I was in medical school. Um, and so I, I love it. And it was actually my wallpaper while I was in, uh, in medical, uh, medical school and resident. Um, and so it starts off with, as a member of the medical profession, I swear to dedicate my life to the service of humanity. And that is something that I carry with me every day. Um, there is no distinction in my mind between an Israeli child and an Apocanian child, um, between anybody of any background. I have taken an oath to be, um, a caretaker for humanity. And regardless of anyone's background, I will be there when these people need it. Keeping that in mind, too often within the United States, we get caught up with specialty and pomp and prestige and all that stuff. But fundamentally, healthcare, if you want to boil it down, it comes down to, um, people. It comes down to caring for people. And so that's, that's what I try and keep in mind. Uh, do you mind if I ask where your sister goes to school? Because we have a couple of local organizations here.
She's not in the US.
Oh, okay. No worries. All right.
Okay, folks, uh, we're over our time. And thank you, Amy, for allowing us to do that. And it looks like our press conference is not happening.
The mic is not on.
Uh, okay. So, uh, thank you, Amy, for allowing us to run over, uh, about fifteen minutes. I appreciate that. It looks like our press conference is not happening. Not surprising in this town. We have a table up here with campaign materials and a signup sheet for our email list. And we have a donation QR code up there. Feel free to use it. And if you have any questions of me, Aaron, or the doctor, uh, stick around after the talk. And thank you all very much for coming. Much appreciated.